Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads. Oh dear heavens, Paul, again, we just thank you for such a beautiful, warm, sunny day. We just thank you for all the beauty that we're seeing in the spring as sager greening up. We just thank you for this country that we live in and all the privileges that we have that go along with it. Just be with the council now as we go through the decisions that have to be made that they might be pleasing to you, Father. Just be with us again all the evening and until we meet again here, Father. Just stay. Amen.
Thank you. We'll move on through the agenda. Councilman Mills will be a little late to call. He's on his way. I assume you've all seen a copy of the minutes of our May 14 meeting? Have you entertained motion, please?
Yes.
Gary?
Second.
Great. Any changes or additions, corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Is there any public comment out there on any of the items we have before us? Seeing none, we'll move along.
So Emily's here, I believe, from Memphis. Emily Williams is here, gentlemen, to talk about Memphis' request for abatement. And we are here for the public hearing on that. I'll go ahead and make a few comments to the board.
So we'll open the public hearing right at this point?
Is there a place that we're supposed to stand?
Right there.
Yep. We presented this request to you last month and did a whole presentation on the site and a few of the specifics. It's going to be an 80 acre plot of land on 150 south and 250 east, about 9.9 megawatts, thereabouts is what we're preliminarily looking at. We'll dodge the regulated drainage area. We've got some extra space on the land if you need for a little bit. We're investing $15 million in county, and this is in addition to the other solar parks that we built in the city of Crawfordsville as well as the one element currently as it's in Darlington's electric service territory. So this will be the fifth that will be interconnected with Crawfordsville's electric system. All of the power generated at the site will stay locally within the community and the sideburners as such, so they don't backfeed on the transmission system. So it's a green, renewable resource for all of those here. If you have any other questions about the site or if you're a investor, you can have to take those.
I'll just start out. Does anybody from the public have any questions or anything to say about this?
Like you said, you had, it was, I think, felt that actually one percentage of relative power would be supplied by this.
Yeah, not so much, I don't know the exact from this solar park in total, but when we looked at, once this solar park and with the other four that are going to be built in Crawfordsville, I want to say it was 30 or 40 percent of the city's power when they're all producing at their peak.
I believe it was in the high 40s.
Okay.
So remember that.
And in fact, I'm sorry, I don't have that information right in front of me this morning, but I can get it from the public.
Anybody else from the public have any thing to say in this public hearing? I guess I do have a question, Lee, and I've been asked more than once, on the, when the life of these solar panels are over, is it a hazardous waste that comes off of that or anything?
No, no, so it's certainly not classified as a hazardous waste in the eyes of the federal government or anything of the like. The majority of the modules, they're aluminum rend, and then they're glass, and then there's some silicon in the solar cells. But we've done decommissioning kind of studies of what that would look like. A lot of the modules are actually recyclable, so we can get quite a bit of that money back. And then we would be complying with any state or federal laws at the time as to how to properly dispose of those modules when that time comes. Now, they're warranted for 25 years, and we see their lifespan being quite a bit longer than that. So a lot of times, this question also comes with, what would we do when that time comes? And the modules is getting more and more efficient, so we envision popping on a more efficient version when that time comes.
So you think, I mean, your vision is that this solar, the five fields are ongoing for indefinitely?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to look out 40 or 50 years at this point, but that's how we see it. Now, if that's not how it goes, we've got some really good revitalized farm plant there, because we would just pull out the posts and...
So you would take care of that?
Oh, yes.
That would all be done?
Yeah, that's us. And the posts are all driven posts, there's no concrete or anything, so it's a really pretty easy decommission process. And that's steel, so we sell that for scrap metal at the time. Yeah, that would be our...
Still no real negative effect with neighbors and all their own?
No, no, we haven't heard.
Crawfordsville's already is okay.
I guess not going to be Crawfordsville.
And with...
Well, they're right across the street here.
Well, I'm talking about...
Yeah.
Right, the neighborhood.
County's a particular area, right?
Yes.
Is that, they're falling down?
I guess it depends on any file for your permits yet, I mean, all your permits or anything on that.
No, we've filed for any permits yet. We haven't designed or formally...
Don't expect any problem there.
Are those, are those actuating panels?
Like rotating with the sun? Yes.
So there are some moving parts in the...
Yeah, so we have...
But slow movement.
Yeah, motors, very slow. Motors and drivelines that, so the modules all sit on pork tubes is what they're actually, I can see them right up here. The modules have been largely installed, but there's big simple tubes sitting on top, and they rest on there, and then they've got drivelines and motors that are rotating the modules.
Adjusted to the weather and summer and winter.
Yeah, so they're coordinated with GPS, and they know exactly where the sun is. The sun's rays during winter are just so much lower, so you just don't get as much capacity at that point.
So in May, we had, this council adopted, we declared to our resolution 2019-6 that declared the immediate area that they seek to put the solar panels on as an economic revitalization area. And so today, public hearing, when it closes, then I believe, we'll be seeking that we have a resolution confirming our adoption, declared to our resolution, making it an ERA for him, but and so if there's no more, then we need to move on to that against, unless there's more public comment.
Any other public comment this time? Counsel, all steps. So we'll close the public, we'll close public hearing at this time. Counsel, have any discussion on any of these questions?
What we have is, we have 2019-10. As you'll see on the agenda, we have coming up 7, 8, and 9. This is 10, so we will take care of 7, 8, and 9 in the new business. But what we have is the resolution confirming adoption, declared to our resolution, designated ERA on application of the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. And so we've been having guys vote on this resolution, which is 2019-10.
I would entertain a motion at this time to approve Resolution Number 2019-10.
I would make a motion to approve the Resolution 2019-10 as described by Rob?
Second.
Who's that?
Tom.
Okay, thanks. Any discussion amongst us?
All I need to do, Terry, is make the comment that I will abstain from voting because I am representing property overnight because I am...
Okay, thanks, Greg. Any other comments, questions? All in favor of passing Resolution 2019-10, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All standing?
One, yes.
Thank you. Moving on to money matters. And I would ask if you do make the motion or second that you state your name, just for the secretary to take the notes, make sure she gets it right, since it's not being recorded or anything. So we have additional appropriations, probation office, 22,000, either 19-4, 240.
All right, this was the official spot to stand, so here we go. I warned you unfortunately last fall that I would be struggling to pay this one salary that I also have picked up, and so here I am. I'm asking for $22,819.40 to finish paying out this year. This is for our office administrator. And we just keep doing what we can do, writing grants, going from juggling funds to funds to funds, but I need your help to get this one paid for the rest of the year. That's my short squeeze of it.
Is there a change, could find a grant or something in the next six months or something?
No, the only change is that I didn't get it approved last fall, and unfortunately we had to get the budget passed, so I said we'd do our best.
Right. And there's no chance for anything, you have that you can supersede at this point?
And this is, as the home's administration position, we just created new a few years ago, something you had?
This is a position that's been with the county, was juggling budgets, trying to make ends meet. That probation agreement we picked up, and we said, well, pick it up for a year, help you get through. If we've got the money, we're willing to pay it. We're willing to do whatever we can. But then this past year, it wasn't able to be picked back up by county general. So we had to keep, we basically got stuck with it, let's say it that way, ran it here. We've made it to June, we're running up. So there's, unfortunately with probation, and probably that went with a lot of the funds, is it's how much you collect, it's no guarantee of what's going to be there. So if I would know that we would be guaranteed to have these funds at the end of the year, I'd say we keep going. But there is no guarantee. And so if there are going to be funds collected at the end of the year, it just means it helps our budget go right next year, later this year, that we would be able to look at additional salaries that way.
Any other question?
So with that, so if there is a possibility, there could be some other funds, no grants coming in, but there could be some other funds generated from some collections, is that possibly?
So we pay this and other salaries out of our user fee fund. So if everyone has placed probation, paid all their fees every single time, we'd be good. We probably wouldn't need your help. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen. So it's one of those things where if you look at numbers currently, I don't know what's going to happen between now and the end of the year, and that's just the...
So this is worst case scenario?
Oh, no.
They should be back in two months. Could be back in two months.
I'm going to have faith that I'm not going to be back in two months. This is the only salary that I asked for assistance for specifically for this year, that I knew that would potentially cause me concerns. And if we can make it through this one, I'm going to have faith that I won't come back this year for any additional appropriations, any additional, additional appropriations.
Any other questions, Greg? I would entertain a motion to approve this request.
Salute.
Great.
Mark second. Mark S.
Thanks, guys. Any other discussion or questions? Are we upside down in the bud right now? I mean, is it negative balance or?
Those are I don't do negative balance.
So you've got three days left, three months left? This is going to carry you how many months?
This carries me through the end of the year.
Yeah, I know, but if you didn't have anything, how far would you give? If we didn't, if we didn't fund this, how far would?
Once again, I don't know, because there's no guarantee of what comes in. If we look at numbers as of today, and I don't get solid collections, in other words, historical collections, we won't, yes, run out of funds for the end of the year. If funds come in, and that's why I have no control of knowing, then we might be able to sweep by. So...
So right now, you don't, you're getting, you're funded right now, but you're going to run out.
Yes.
The way it looks.
Yes. Poten-, I mean, potentially. I can't, I can't foretell the future, that's for now. I have no control over that.
I'm just looking at, if you're not out of funds to pay the payroll, we may get to December before then, you know, and we could do this at any one time.
I think if, I get very concerned with that concept, in that would it affect a different salary? Would I lose someplace else? Right now, I'm dependent on a grant coming through, and we haven't heard yet. And if I don't get that grant, then I'm going to be in a pickle. And I have two funds that we will transfer with this next budget salary, that's to solve my pickle problem, if I get to that point. So if you can guarantee my grant's going to come through, then it'd be one thing, but it's too much juggling, is concerning.
Any other questions? I don't want to, if we do this, where's going to come from?
We're going to pull back $22,000, $23,000 from...
I know it's a lot.
Big picture.
Think of that, county general.
I know we probably would, just become a cash. Sure. Ryan, can you bring in a more financially responsible group?
I was hoping she could say she could predict the future. Because if she could, I would cut up with the $22,000 out of my budget to pay this.
His clientele are my clientele. It's a catch twenty-two. Here's one of my other big concerns, I'm just trying to kind of throw it out, and I don't need to screw anybody else over. It comes down to, if I don't ask for this now, and I'm going to pickle, and every other department has already come and asked, I'm going to eat a bigger pickle. So, and I guess I'm just saying, if we're bored, it's coming to this, and we're at that. I've got 16 positions, if I guys pay five, I take care of 11, help me out with this $22,000.
Here, the balance on the clock pair loan covers it. Can you call that loan name?
I don't know.
Don't get me involved.
She requested it.
I just don't care what I'm supported or not. I will remind the council that last fall, we were working through the budget, the 11th hour, we asked her to cut her budget back to the dollar amount that she's working with, and she did that.
Cut $144,000 out of that?
I'll be honest, I've looked at too many numbers today. I can't tell you.
That happened last, last fall to cut this kid a hundred and fifty, so just, I understand that. All call for questions. All in favor of approving the request of the probation, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Looks like we got to ask, Sheriff's up next. You can stay there, Randy.
All right, yeah. Number two, the $82,000, it's a reimbursement from the state for sentenced inmates that we've been holding, just a medical reimbursement. And I think that goes about a year and a half worth of time span there. So we're just asking to put that money back into our institute, the medical jail line. Number three, the $1,500, it's just a reimbursement from the food service, GFS, that we buy all the jail mills, mills through. That's routine, it's usually quarterly that they cut us a check back for that. Number four, it's the body scanner. And number five is just a donation from Midwest Bell Ties. So if you, I mean, if you have any questions about any of those, I'd be happy to answer.
So body scanner ordered, no, sorry?
Body scanner's ordered. I would guess three to four weeks max. It's ready for install. We have the wiring ran, location picked out, so it's just a matter of that getting here, getting it set up, and getting the staff trained on that.
So is that it? The body scanner, when we pay this bill, then it's all set up, it's really done?
That's it.
I mean, the train, I mean, I know there's all that to get done, but...
The train is included in that?
Financially, it's all taken care of.
Right. With the exception of the following year for, you know, the maintenance contract. But for, yes, for this year, that, that is set up, installed, ready to go, and the training for all the staff with that as well.
I move to approve two through five.
Second.
Here, you made the motion and don second. Any questions or discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Moving on to the highway, stone, gravel, and sand.
All right. Everybody knows what kind of winter we had. We ran out of stone a month ago, and I didn't get it on your last month's agenda, ten days prior to that meeting or something, anyway. So we've been robbing Peter to pay Paul by tumbers, which we just now started using, been eating it up here, so we'll put that back when we get this. But additional $400,000, there is a cash balance, and it's not appropriated, quite a bit, actually.
What's the balance?
Pardon me?
What's the balance?
Many dollars in it, in there, that was carried over, but wasn't accurately recorded at the end of the year. But, so this is a cash bond set in there, we're just asking to take it out of the cash bonds, put in the stone debt. And then we'll put our bytumens money back where it was, where it had been steered. I should say steel in the jail.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
Greg, so...
Thanks, Greg.
Tom, second.
Any questions or discussion on this? So basically, you borrowed money from bytumens to papers, so it's what we've done this last month, just have to move money around. And we can't quit buying stone, just getting it around. Right. We'll make a dent in it. I'm not talking about the stone pile, I thought that was gross.
Honestly, the engineer and I have been meeting with the highway director over Friday the last few weeks now, and really trying to get ahead of it. It's been a losing battle, obviously, this whole winter. We just, we're going to finish planting corn today, it's 11th of June, so everybody in this community's fighting this, not just the highway. But, yeah, that's, I think somebody did do a calculation, if we had three inches of stone to every gravel road here, it was $30 million. Some of the godly amounts are, you know, there's a limited amount we can do, obviously. But, you know, this, this will get, this should get us through the end of the year. And this is, this is not new money, this is money that's just been, it's unappropriated.
So this will take your bytumens through to the end of the year?
It should, but, yeah, if we put this back in bytumens, or, I, that's the majority of it's been coming out of my tumbens, but, you know, that's, we have, we have not, we're actually haven't started tapping into that yet. So that was the logical place to take it until we needed it, and it's that time of year, and so that stuff's going on, and our budget is not to use any more than what we've already got lined up for bytumens. If we have a great summer and a great fall, we can do some more, we might come back and ask for some of that cash setting there, just setting there, to be additional appropriated, be more bytumens, more, you know...
When we put $700,000 additional bytumens a year ago, was that, I think we did, we put some extra...
Did that, that million dollars, extra million dollars from this salary?
Some of it went into the garage.
I think all of that money, honestly, we spent $2 million last year on surfacing. We added our community crossings, just shy of $700,000, we put a million three, so we used that million plus another three out of the budget, did $2 million worth of re-surfacing.
Any other questions?
Say you didn't know how many, might as well.
I don't know, I was at community crossings, funny one I sort of did last year. Something, do I sound like? That's just community crossing.
I'm just taking the effort, working dillows and maybe getting the roads back up in shape. Something everybody expects. You know, it's a tough job. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks to the highway department for...
Thanks for noticing this. We've been putting $12 shifts in the last three weeks, so we've been trying to get ahead of the game as well.
Right. The highway department is noticed, it's, I, people ask me that. We appreciate the work you do. All right, the public health education grant?
I think we may get tonight. So I told her I would present these. It's actually seven here, and then four and five are transfers. It's simply, the four and five are simply moving them to the correct line. She have it as an employee line, and these are actually interns, so we need to just move them to the correct line. Seven is, goes along with that, but it's just, it's just one money, one grant, so...
We entertain a motion to approve these three items.
Salute.
Second. Any questions? We can stump, you with, Minnie with, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, see Darren's here, addresses.
Yes. I'm sure I'm questioning here, too.
Sure.
This is just a transfer from autopsies up to office supplies. I guess I was a little confused, apparently on the auditor's rules about when I had to buy stuff, and I didn't realize we had a problem until it was, I was getting second, late notices and things that, yeah. I've worked for four different auditors, and everybody has their own way of doing things, so it's on me. The money's coming from autopsy budget, and I'm able to move that money from there because the state passed in... because the state passed and refunded, or funded again, this grant to cover some of our toxicology that typically we've had to pay for all these years. The state health department has generously gotten a grant from someone for something, and now they're paying for, anything that I feel has to do with opiates, they're picking up the tab for the toxicology. So it's saving us money. It's been a reasonable year this year, I haven't been hitting that fund very hard. Wish somebody could tell me how to predict the future. But I think, you know, six months in, we're, we're okay on autopsy money, so it was just easier to move it from there up to the two-hundred series, that's all it is.
I would entertain a motion to approve, Tom bills, second.
Sir, Tom.
Any questions for Darren Collins?
I think we're a cool, working out enough space. It is working very nicely, yes, thank you. And we, we did get the racks through a grant, so we've figured out that we have more capacity than we actually thought we were going to. Some creative rack placement, and using some different style of trays. I hope we don't ever have to use it, but we could feasibly end up pulling up to twenty if we ever need it. So we took our time and did it right, and it shows.
Hope you didn't just jinx it. The resignation, if we get twenty once.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. You got the next one?
The one ten fifty is just a, what I call an auditor issue, of getting that appropriated to the, to the right line item. It's just a transfer from, to a new line we've created within that fund.
It moved approved, thank Mark.
One second. All right, any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Coop Bridge? From replacement to inspection.
Yeah, that's a covered reimbursed, reimbursable expense until the state refunds that.
Okay, right. I entertain a motion to approve this?
So move it.
I'll second.